If I could have, there we go. Good morning. If I could have everyone's attention, we're going to get started here. Welcome to the Millbrae City Council Special Meeting for September 1st, 2023, at 11:30 a.m. City Clerk, if you could, please do roll call.
Councilmember Papin.
Here.
Councilmember Cahalyan.
Here.
Councilmember Fong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
All members of City Council are present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Now, if everybody who can rise, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And City Manager, if you could please do Agenda Overview, Staff Update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we, on the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing, the only thing is a report out from the August 29th closed session. We have our Legal Counsel with us that is via Zoom. Then we move to Public Communication, and that's for any member of the public wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not on the agenda, and speakers are limited to three minutes. Then moving on, under New Business, we have one item, and it is Review and Approval of the Council Communication to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors Regarding the County Purchase of the La Quinta Inn and Suites for Permanent Supportive Housing. City Manager.
Thank you, City Manager. And for the record, our City Attorney is Christine Crowell on that. Okay, the next up is Public Comment. These are for items, anything you want to talk about that is not on the city agenda. As the City Manager said, you have three minutes, and if you come up to the podium, these microphones, as you can tell, are fairly directional.
Mayor, we need a report out from August 29th, 2023.
Oh, I thought you had. I'm sorry.
No, I can do that right now, Madam Mayor, if that's okay?
My apologies.
Please, no reportable, yeah, no reportable action was taken in closed session on August 29th.
Thank you. 11:30 in the morning, it's early for me. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Public Comment, items not on the agenda. If you could please come up to the podium, give your name and your street. Your address isn't as important, but street, because it helps us know where you're coming from. And as you can see, speaking more directly into the microphone allows MCTV to pick up your sound better. So I have John Muniz as the only public comment not on the agenda today.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder and Counsel. I come in peace today. John Muniz, 600 Santa Florita, a resident of the great city of Millbrae. You're in luck. I'm not speaking about the La Quinta. Just want to take this public opportunity to thank and show my appreciation to the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and Millbrae Bureau. Our city is embroiled in changing times, and I appreciate the efforts of Captain Allen and his staff for stepping up their efforts to keep our city and residents safe by utilizing on-the-beat officers, more traffic enforcement, and patrols. In another 18 months to two years, the life sciences projects will be completed. The city will have an influx of 2,000 to 3,000 employees and residents also. Also, Office Depot and El Rancho will come online. Today, we have, we have an immediate need for four more sheriff's deputies. I know the current budget will not sustain the need at this time. In 2.5 years, the San Mateo Sheriff's Contract with the city will be renegotiated. I urge the City Council to make the additional sheriff's officers a top priority and investigate all avenues of funding to make this happen. Our growing city demands maximum law enforcement's presence 24/7. I would appreciate a follow-up on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Muniz. Actually, folks, let's start off, and I am, I'm going to ask you, please, technically, in a local government, we don't boo, we don't clap, but it's lovely to say thank you to our sheriff, so we very much appreciate that. But let's try to be respectful of everybody today. Ron, Michael Kelly, and then Ron Raquel.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. Michael Kelly, I live on Kelly Lane. I just wanted to kind of follow in John's comments, appreciating the city. Recently, I used the See, Click, Fix application. There's been a long challenge on Millbrae Avenue where there's nowhere safe to walk from 280 down to Ashton. I reported that, and within a few months, several months, Department of Public Works painted two pedestrian biking lines. It's not, it doesn't stop people parking there, but they made it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, people walking their dogs, and so many people have already made mention of that. They feel safer walking on Millbrae Avenue, so I want to commend the city for implementing the program. I think it's been a great rollout. It's easy to use. You can report almost any problem you might find when you're out and around in Millbrae. So just a shout-out to Armando and Craig Centas and Batista, the people at work, City Manager Tom Williams. It was a fantastic process. They kept me informed as it was going ahead, and the lines were painted a few weeks ago. So Millbrae's safer because of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ron Raquel.
Hello, City Council. My name is Ron Raquel. I live at 193 Willow. I just wanted to update you on the progress of the intersection of Millbrae and Magnolia Avenue. I emailed Armando yesterday, and he told me that unfortunately, Caltrans rejected the bid for, for the study and implementation for controlled turn signal. So we have to go back to square one for safe crossing at that horrendous intersection. As Ann Schneider has said, Millbrae is the poor stepchild of the county, and wherever we get funding, and this is a prime example, as I have mentioned, I've been hit almost 20 to 25 times in the last five years, and I'm not the only one who has encountered this. And this needs to be addressed, and hopefully, we, Armando will get more funding for this project, because safety is of importance. And if, if, I'm just looking out for the safety of all residents here, and if one person dies, this is going to be a stain on everyone here. It's good to be proactive than reactive, and that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raquel. Marion Kong.
Marion Kong. Two things. First, there's an intersection near my place, Santa Florita and then Juanita. Every morning, when the school, when the school resume, every morning between 8:00 and 8:40, there's no traffic law there. People just turn, they move forward. So I hope the City Council, the city, maybe can take some action. And also, you all have heard last week or this week, the 200 block on Broadway, there are two incidents of a car breaking in, and then this has happened for some times. And then some of those are the tourists from other countries stop over to have meals, and then they have some of their belongings in the car. But I just urge the city to put a little more lighting or maybe some cameras out there. At least we can capture after, or maybe we can deter somebody who wants to break in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. I have no other slips by members present. I think we have one person on Zoom.
Yes, Mayor, we have a speaker, John Teresi. Please unmute yourself to speak. Joe?
No, I actually wanted to speak on the, on the agenda item, sorry.
No worries, Mr. Teresi, we'll, we'll get to you. All right, closing, if, last call, closing public comment. Moving on to New Business. Before I go there, I want to apologize to the people of Millbrae. I had hoped that we would have had a public meeting on August 31st, but we were not able to have a council quorum at that. So at that meeting, I had hoped that we would talk and provide facts from the city, which we've not yet been able to do. That said, we do have this meeting today with the five of us, and our goal today is to look at the agenda item and to come up with a, the next steps on that. I just want to remind the public that the City Council has no decision-making authority in this case. We can only do the best that we can. So with that, I'm going to allow City Manager, please come on board, and for MCTV, this is New Business, Review and Approve, Review and Approval of Council Communications to San Mateo County Board of Supervisors Regarding County Purchase of La Quinta Inn and Suites for Permanent Supportive Housing. This is an action item, and for many new people, that means council will be taking a vote today. So please allow us enough time to deliberate so that we can get that vote in. With that, City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good morning to you, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. And again, the subject item today is the review and consideration of approval for Council Communication to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors Regarding the County Purchase of the La Quinta Inn and Suites for Permanent Supportive Housing. So as you may recall, back on July 11th, the City Council heard a presentation from the San Mateo County and officials from San Mateo County regarding a county-initiated proposal to purchase and convert the La Quinta Inn and Suites, which is located at 1390 El Camino Real here in the city of Millbrae, into permanent supportive housing. And so this county-initiated project would be primarily funded through the state of California's Home Key Program and administered by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So the county's proposal to acquire and convert the La Quinta Inn and Suites, it was not open to the city of Millbrae, it wasn't transparent to the city of Millbrae. We did not and were not informed of this until sometime in June, and then that's when we asked the county to come, the first meeting in July, to present the information to the City Council. Also, the City Council has requested to convene this meeting in order to provide a response to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors Regarding their proposed purchase of the La Quinta Inn and conversion of the hotel prior to their scheduled board meeting of September 12th at 9:00 a.m. to consider further actions and continued purchase of the, of the La Quinta Hotel. So with that, Mayor, attached to the staff report is a draft of the letter for consideration for the City Council. At the pleasure of the Council, if you'd like me to read that into the record, I will, or I would just open it up for questions.
Counsel. Tom, City Manager, please read it into the record.
Okay, the letter, the draft letter is to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, care of Dave Pine, President of the Board of Supervisors. Says Supervisor Pine, members of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. The city of Millbrae is disappointed in how San Mateo County has handled the proposed project to purchase and convert the La Quinta Inn and Suites into supportive housing. The city found out about the project at the same time as our residents first learned about it. We believe that a supportive housing project that serves the county's stated purpose could be successful in the city of Millbrae without undermining the city's vibrant and vital commercial and revenue-generating uses. We understand the concerns of the county regarding the ongoing homelessness problem. The city of Millbrae has spent over $500,000 to address homelessness issues within the city and continues to support affordable housing projects such as the Rollins, a recently completed Millbrae housing project supported by $2.88 million of city funds for 80 low-income housing units, which are all now leased, and 40% to veterans. That was a Veterans Preferred Housing project. The letter goes on to state, "The city is committed to doing its fair share to address homelessness issues and expects the county and each city within the county to do the same. To achieve the goal of net zero homelessness effectively, it is imperative that each city provide their fair share of supportive housing. Projects the county undertakes must be right-sized to reflect each municipality's population, rather than overburden one city over another and place a solution on only a few. We urge the county to meet with our staff and the City Council to further discuss ways that both parties can work together proactively. The city of Millbrae is one of the smallest in the county, both in terms of population and in terms of billable land, and relies heavily on its commercial and transient occupancy tax, also referred to as TOT, generating land uses. The county's proposed project would reduce the city's annual revenue by nearly $600,000. Moreover, the county has not attempted to address the city's concern about increased annual expenditures related to city police, fire, and other services totaling approximately $172,000 annually." That's in current dollars. "Nor has the county quantified or addressed," page 2, "the existing jobs that will be eliminated by the proposal or provided the city with assurances that the county will be able to maintain and repair the project. The city of Millbrae will have an annual deficit of $772,000 if this project is implemented." Total, that's total economic impact. "The county has failed to address how it will assist the city in recouping the revenue necessary to provide its essential services. Projects pursued by the county must not result or incentivize the closure of viable businesses and the loss of local jobs. We urge the Board of Supervisors to adopt and implement such a policy before pursuing the purchase of properties such as La Quinta Inn and Suites here in the city of Millbrae. In short, none of the city's concerns have been addressed, nor has the county attempted to engage the city in meaningful discussions of these important issues. Finally, the county has failed to comply with the requirements of Government Code 65402, which requires the county to request a general plan and zoning conformity determination from the city upon describing the location, purpose, and extent of a proposed property acquisition. The City Council looks forward to a response from the board. Sincerely, Ann Schneider, Mayor, Millbrae City Council."
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, City Council, do you have any comments, or do we want to go to public comment?
How long?
Well, right now, I've got, and I can see people writing out their 11 speaker slips. We have over 30 people on Zoom. We don't know their percentage on that. I had thought about going to two minutes, so I asked the public, if we go to two minutes, please try to stay at two minutes. For the public, when we clap or boo, it extends the length of a meeting, and it doesn't let us get to the deliberation that we need to do today. I understand this is very emotional for many and for all, and that there are people on both sides of this issue here today. So I'm asking you, please, to be respectful of each other and be respectful to all of us, so that we can get the job done that we need to get done today. And hopefully, we will have that future meeting where we can have more time on that, on this. So with that, I'm going to call the first person, it's Karen Nemsek. Karen, if you could please come up to the podium. Following Karen is Jess Hudson. Following Jess Hudson is Laura Smith. Karen Nemsek? Okay. If you could please state your name and street address.
I'm not comfortable sharing my address, given that people have threatened violence against me for supporting this project. So it is on my speaker slip, but I'm not going to say that out loud. My name is Jess Hudson. I'm a longtime Millbrae resident, speaking in support of the 1390 El Camino Permanent Housing Project. I moved here 11 years ago with my two small children, having never stepped foot in the city before and knowing no one. I set to work volunteering through the PTAs as a Girl Scout troop leader and immersing myself in community building. At the same time, my family was experiencing domestic violence, poverty, and the constant fears of housing insecurity. My family has never been far from the edge of homelessness in this county, just like more than 35% of our rent-burdened folks living in the county. My children and I relied on a compassionate community here to reinforce the idea that our struggles didn't impact our worth as neighbors, and that with some help, we could recover and thrive in Millbrae. I am acutely aware of the transformational nature of a supportive, compassionate community that builds up those who struggle so they can achieve the stability necessary to heal from trauma and become thriving members of this community. That's the vision that I have for Millbrae and for the project. Bringing our unhoused neighbors into safe, supportive homes is how we reduce crime, build strong and equitable communities, and achieve functional zero homelessness. I urge the city to come to the table in good faith to achieve these goals and promote a peaceful and civil discourse. It's your duty as leader to do so. I appreciate that you've done that today, Mayor Snyder, but that is not what it has been in the past, and I hope that this tenor is what we can expect in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Karen Nemsek?
Good morning. My name is Karen Nemsek. I'm the Director of Housing Justice with United Way Bay Area, and I'm speaking on behalf of United Way Bay Area today. The United Way Bay Area covers all nine counties in the Bay region, so that includes the city of Millbrae. So we strongly support the issue of permanently supportive housing, and particularly this site at 1390 El Camino Real. This site will benefit San Mateo County residents who have been unhoused for at least a year, many of whom are seniors and people with chronic disabilities. I would say that when we think about who's going to be living here, these aren't people who aspire to be homeless. These aren't people who in kindergarten, when the teacher says, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" You want to, they, they didn't say, "I want to have depression or schizophrenia." They didn't say, "I want to have a learning disability that prevents me from having a job that pays a living wage." They just wanted to grow up and be, be people in a community. This housing provides an opportunity of healing for folks who are in this situation. We don't look at cancer as a stigmatic disease, but we do schizophrenia and depression and other, other things that people have no control over. So with this housing, this will be a space of healing for people. Residents have numerous benefits, so they will have a case manager and counseling to get over traumas of potential child abuse or family violence. They will get back on medications. They will have a strong secured door so that they feel safe when they go to bed at night. Episcopal Family Services, who is a trusted regional leader, will operate the site and provide these important onsite services, including case management, behavioral health services, workforce development, benefits assistance, and referrals to outside resources. Our vision at United Way is an equitable Bay Area.
Ma'am, Ms. Nesmith, I'm sorry, time's up. Time's up, that's two minutes. Thank you, please end.
Thank you. So we strongly support this housing.
Please, no comments from the, the audience. Laura Smith?
Good afternoon. Thank you to Ann Schneider and the Council for this opportunity to speak. My name is Laura Smith, resident of Millbrae on Taylor Boulevard for more than 20 years. I want to start out by saying that I think we all agree on the need to help homeless persons and the persons that have been described as unfortunate, less fortunate than ourselves. It's not that we don't wish to help people. The question that's really being debated here is where and what makes sense. I'm not going to speak about the financial impact, because I think a lot of other people are going to address that, and the City Manager has addressed that. What I want to talk about in particular is the location and siting of a facility of this size, which is quite unprecedented in size, and certainly for a location in a sort of residential type of neighborhood and community. This has really never been done. This is a whole new program. There's no real track record about how, are people really helped? Are they safe in these facilities? Is there really any rehabilitation that can take place in such a large setting with so many people with very severe needs in some cases? So that in itself is something to discuss. We also have the location issue of BART, which is a concern for Millbrae, because we already have an outreach program for homeless people on BART at night, and there's a substantial problem that occurs every night with BART. And a sitting another supportive facility near BART could become a sort of, you know, I'm not going to say magnet or Mecca or whatever, but people within supporting housing in other cities have complained about unauthorized persons trying to access the facility. It's not really safe. It could be unsafe for people within the facility. It could be safe because of the underground parking lots, that BART is, BART is a unique challenge.
Ma'am, thank you very much. Time's up. No, no, come on, please, please. Liann Ho, and then, is this Cindy or Cynthia Liang? Liang?
Hi, good morning. My name is Liann, and I live on Poplar Avenue. I've been living in Millbrae for about five to six years now. I have two young kids, and my younger son actually went to Lominta Park last year. So my own, my question is, I understand we have homeless issue we need to resolve. Same thing as Laura. I think the location is an issue. There's 10 schools or after-school programs, walking distance close to La Quinta Inn. Why is there? What happened if something happens? What will happen to our kids? Who will be responsible for the safety of the Troodens? I know we heard there's no previous cases, but I don't think we should use no previous cases as something that we can lean the numbers to. Same thing for gun violence. There's many things we can prevent, but we didn't take anything to prevent it. I don't want to say it's too late when something happens. So my point is, I think this location is not a desirable location because of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ho. Come on now. Sin Liang, and then Stephen Rinaldi, and then Michael Kelly.
Hi, my name is Sin. I live on Basalona Drive. This, this La Quinta Inn issue come up, and I was shocked. I am not against homeless. I am not against the compassion that those hold in your heart for the homeless people. We wanted them to have, to have housing, but... But the obvious elephant in the room is that a majority of this group, they have mental illness. They have drug problem. They have alcohol problem. With that being my, I agree with the previous two speakers that why do we choose a location that is within the residential area? Within a block of an elementary school, two blocks from a high school, three blocks from another school called Green Hills? That location is, it really confused me that why? Why that location is being picked? In La Quinta Hotel Inn, that according to all the numbers that just presented by our City Manager, is a vibrant hotel. The tourists is picking up in this area. We, this inn is generating revenue for our city, which we use to fund our public services, which is fire station, our schools, and et cetera, and et cetera. So this location that is being picked by the County of San Mateo, it doesn't make sense. So please, I would ask the mayor, thank you, Mayor, leading all of our council members to raise our concern to the County of Supervisors so we will help them find alternatives.
Thank you, Ms. Liang.
Thank you.
Stephen Rinaldi. I feel like I'm a schoolteacher again.
Thank you, City Council and people of Millbrae. I'll keep it really brief. First and foremost, this whole process has been absolutely not transparent. It lacks plenty of details around the terms and conditions. We've heard a lot of wishy-washiness out of Mike Caligie in the county. I've met with some of the board supervisors. Here's a fact for you that you may not know, that ECS is actually involved in a lawsuit for their management of the Hotel Granada in San Francisco. That was something Mr. Caligie did not know yesterday when I met with him. I will also say that the location is highly inappropriate, given that it's right by La Mita Park. I'm a 42-year resident that grew up two blocks away from La Quinta, and my best friend, childhood friend's house, was right across the street from the playground at La Mita as well as La Quinta. Also furthermore, the fiscal impact makes no sense. These are going to be long-term residents that are going to depend on Millbrae's services, like police, fire, as well as our public works. So why are we going to set them up for failure by fiscally straining ourself? So I'm looking at the council today for a commitment to tell them, no, to hit the pause button and come with an open hand instead of an iron fist and work with us to do a project that makes sense. This is not about Millbrae being nimbly or being unkind to the homeless. This is about what's doing right to set everyone up for long-term success. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Michael Kelly? After Michael Kelly, we've got Joe, but I... Josie Torito. Oh, Josie, okay. Michael Kelly, go ahead, sorry.
Hi, Michael Kelly. I live on Kelly Lane. It's a coincidence. I have been here before this project, but I understand that topic today is this correspondence that council is going to vote on to send to the county. Professionally, I negotiate contracts. I've done hundreds of millions of dollars of contracts in the last 30 years. If you're going to have principled negotiation, it has to be backed based...
Michael, please look at us. You're speaking to us.
I'm speaking to everyone.
No, you're speaking to us. Everyone, you'll be addressing the council.
I am going to share my experience that if you put something in writing that is not accurate, you diminish your ability to have a principled negotiation. There are things in this letter... First of all, let me say, I think the letter's a great idea. I think, as Councilman Thun pointed out one of our earlier meetings, we should absolutely try to extract every piece of value, dollars, what have we, out of the county that we can. Mike Caligie has gone on record saying, "City Manager Tom Williams is a worthy negotiator. He's doing this in good faith." I think based on that, what we need to do with this letter is make sure it's accurate. There's a concept in negotiation called the BATNA, Best Alternative to a Negotiated Agreement. Millbrae doesn't really have one. The county can decide to do this. We're asking for a seat at the table. We want to present our situation and ask them to help us offset this cost it's going to be to Millbrae. Setting aside the separate issue, humankind versus, and humanity versus loss of revenue, those are two different problems that can be solved two different ways. So with that said, I would ask that some elements be changed in this letter and then submit it. You know, saying that the county has not addressed where they're going to be able to maintain and repair the project. They own a $30 million asset. What possibly could cause us to think they won't maintain it? That's just a statement that is not based in fact. The fact that the county has addressed how they're going to bring in an extra deputy and these other things, they have begun to do that. We should ask for more. I absolutely believe. But for this letter to be meaningful, it needs to be accurate. So it should be updated and then signed and submitted. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Josie Torito. And after Josie, Brian Tang. And then Albert Yam.
Hello. I'm Josie Torito, and I live at 640 Taylor Boulevard. I've been there for 45 years. And my biggest concern, well, the taxes and all that, that's a concern. But at the big meeting we had just recently, they never really talked how they were going to vet the people that they put in this facility. He said they would do a background check and have them have references from their former landlords. Well, if they've been homeless, I don't see how they can get too many references. The other thing is, oh, and they said if they were a pedophile, they were not going to be allowed to stay in there. But we all know that some people do escape the law and don't really have any criminal record. But I was also told that they are going to allow the people to not be recovered alcoholics or recovered drug addicts. That is my main concern. I had a young brother at 25 who OD'd in San Francisco. I don't want to see anyone, especially our young children, have to find a body like my brother's. So I urge the city, please, be very strong with your letter. Let them know that we are very concerned for our families and our children. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Torito, and my condolences for your loss. Brian Tang. And Albert Yam. And then Sunny Au Young.
Thanks for having me. My name is Brian Tang. I'm on Tulumi Row. Wasn't planned for this, but it was kind of interesting that I just heard about the demand for accuracy and precision in a correspondence, which is my concern for the whole Home Key project, which is lack of accuracy and precision. My ask for you foes is to demand the ongoing governance for this. The project throughout has been lack of clarity, right? Can't go back in time, can't go back to what happened, you know, from June to now. But going forward, as much as I'm against this project, I'm actually as concerned for the tenants, for the homeless, for the unfortunate foes that would be putting into this. Because I actually play back Mr. Caligie Town Hall curina several times just to make sure I don't miss out any information. My feeling, could be just my feeling, the responsibility and governance over this project performance, it's already getting deflected, the responsibility. Oh, it's ECS. Oh, there's going to be a liaison, going to be hiring for this. There's going to be a HOC committee. Who is the one that's going to be accountable for this? All the financial, all the social, all the safety concerns that we are bringing up could be just concerns of no basis, but who knows what's going to happen? We can't allow a project to go, let's see how it goes about it. It's unfair to Millbrae. It's unfair to the tenants as well. For the people to care about the homeless, don't just give them a roof. Make sure they're being taken care of and put them back on the right course. It's not just a checkbox about giving them a roof. That's not support. You're not supporting them. You're not helping them. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Tang. I know you want to hang on to those claps, go outside and clap out there. Albert Yam, and then Sunny. And then Marilyn Cooney.
Hello, my name is Albert Yam. I live on Awani Drive. I'm a new resident of Millbrae, but I've been coming to Millbrae to support local commerce for 20 years. I'm not very good with public speaking, so I'm just going to pardon me. The second, what the last constituent told about, I think there were a lot of questions that Millbrae residents asked at the town hall meeting. If they were addressed but not answered. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's what really anything affirmative about the actions the San Mateo County is going to take on this project besides going ahead with the purchase. The city has questions, different kinds of questions, which I think should be answered too, and that aligns with the wish of the residents. Therefore, I would hope that the council pass on this letter. Finally, I'm a first-generation immigrant of this country. I work hard. I pay taxes and, but also understand, because coming from a different background, I have seen many different, different upcomings, upbringings. And I totally understood, you know, there are the less fortunate that needs to be helped. But also, it's, it almost makes me feel like this is, this is becoming a socialist state. You know, that's where I came from. I thought America is a land of freedom of speech, of freedom, free capitalism and innovation, meaning all the ideas of the people should be listened to and make good decisions. Because I'm not smarter than any of you.
Mr. Yam, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Sunny, then Marilyn. And then, I'm sorry if I'm ruining people's names, Yumei Chow. And then Ray Chen.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Sunny. I live in Millbrae Circle. And I want to bring this to your attention today because I really feel like $33 million to buy La Quinta is way off the market price. I've been in this real estate business and also remodeling business for over 30 years. I have friends that are developer and real estate agent, commercial real estate agent. I've talked to over a dozen people, and they all feel this project is overpricing. And we have requested Mike Caligie to give us a appraisal, and we have reviewed it. And there's only one. And like I said, I sent it to my friends, and they feel like it's overpricing. So I'm asking you guys, because city requests to do a appraisal of this project, and also as resident, we might raise some money to do one as well. So we could match the price together to see if this is a fair price. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Marilyn.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor Schneider, and fellow residents. Thank you for all of your efforts. We all want to help unhoused people. That's, I think, not in question. The letter, I am puzzled. It doesn't seem to mention BART, and I don't know why that is. Because a couple of years ago, I was on BART. I was stuck in the station for a good hour, and suddenly, we were all told to evacuate the train. The ambulances came, sirens, and someone had been murdered on that very train. Since then, I have reluctantly traveled BART for my business. I regularly see people jumping over the turnstiles or people on drugs or asking for money for their entertainment on BART. So when I asked this question of Mr. Caligie at the meeting in, at the rec center, he said, "Oh, what was the county doing about BART and the impact on Millbrae?" And he said, "Oh, we're going to meet with Mr. Pine tomorrow about this." And I don't know if anything has come from that meeting or what pressure. I mean, if we're going to be forced to have a facility in a place that we have not asked for, can we at least get some attention from the county about the BART problem? Some more pressure on BART to control who was on there and where they get off the stations instead of completely dumping all of this on Millbrae? And what about Burlingame? What about Menlo Park? What about all of these other places? Can't we share the burdens? But I think these things need to be included in your letter. Thank you for all of your efforts for our fine city.
Thank you, Ms. Cooney. Yumei Chow. And then Ray Chen.
Hi, my name is Yumei Chow, and I have lived in Millbrae since the early 80s. So I brought up my two children here. I am sympathetic towards the homeless. My question is, actually, it's a question for the council members. I'm very disappointed with the letter that the City Manager has read out. You have known about the situation since June, and I have been following this case since July. I find that there is nothing new in the letter that you have drawn up. You are still talking about the same old things. Why haven't the council members come up with perhaps an initial suggestion or a solution as what a county should do? So that is my question to the council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Ray and Magnus Thorne. And then Stephen Lee.
Thank you, Ray Chen, a 20-year resident of Lowery Lane. Now, Millbrae is complicated. We are a small town with limited resources. Much of our land on El Camino has already been co-opted by public agencies, PUC, SFO, BART, and soon High Speed Rail. But I think we're looking for a solution to the housing crisis, but we're looking for the right solution and the right-sized solution. Citing the rather large Home Key project inside a fully operational hotel on El Camino in the heart of a small town that is highly dependent on the hotel business for economic survival, that that does not strike me as the right solution. And adding 100 currently unhoused residents to a city that has already committed 200 affordable units, that does not strike me as the right-sized solution. So I would urge you to take a step back and maybe instead of immediately moving on Millbrae, why don't we look at some of the surrounding communities with vacant hotels and willing sellers? Maybe instead of going to Millbrae first, we go to South City, or we go to Burlingame. There are units along the Bay Shore. There are units on Airport Boulevard. Why not start there or working out the complicated situation in Millbrae? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Magnus Thorne. And then Stephen Lee.
Hello, my name is Magnus Thorne. I live on Palm Avenue. I'm a resident for over a decade, and I am a Millbrae CERT member. I've dealt with, I've stopped two shoplifting attempts in Millbrae. I've seen all the homeless on BART. I've seen the drug use. Reporting on the BART app doesn't seem to do anything. I definitely see them getting on and off BART. As a previous resident has said, I agree that BART's the problem. As a previous member, resident has said, I agree that BART's the problem. We shouldn't be wasting the city money and resources on adding more homeless to the town that will attract even more homeless. The original problem's not being solved. We should be fixing BART security. They need to solve that problem, and it will solve our problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Stephen Lee, and now Edward Tam and Marion Kong. And if anyone else is out there, please get your slips in, because we're going to move to those people on Zoom.
Good morning. I'm a local resident here, over 23 years, on Canal Drive, and I'd like to ask to incorporate the following two points. Point number one is the county provide us a copy of appraisal report. I'm sorry, I have to say that's a piece of garbage. First of all, the person who appraised the property is not qualified. Number two, he used incorrect method to appraise. He's putting a big puzzle, so we can see the pretty side. From the appraisal standpoint, we'll, we have three methods to appraise the property, the market value, income approach, and replacement cost. The fact this is an income property, it's a tourist hotel, any investor, any commercial lender, they will look at what's the rate of return. So based on those returns, they can determine a fair price, what we call market value. And the county just stuffs something on the table, assuming that's correct. We need to challenge them, whether the city is going to hire independent professional appraiser who specializes in hotel, or we, as a resident, we can come up, raise funds to produce this, to argue that they are way, way overpriced. Point number two is, we need to ask Mr. Kelly to back off. The impression I have from him is he's going to do this regardless of what we're going to say or what we're going to do. Are we in communist country? Last time I checked, we are the most wealthy country on this earth. Why we have all this homeless? Are they local groom, or they were shipped here, just like the illegal immigrant causing the borderline gap to our country?
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Edward Tam, ah, come on now, come on now. Edward Tam and Marion Kong, and then John Young and Steve Flaherty.
Hi, I'm also a Millbury resident. I live on Helen Drive, and I think we all agree here that homelessness is a problem that we need to solve. My main concern with this project is that there isn't a real long-term plan for success here. Everything seems very short-sighted in how things are being planned out. And once we're committed to this project, it's going to be very difficult for us to back, go backwards. So I really would like to see this project halted and to do a due diligence to figure out, like, what, what would be required to make this successful? So far, we've heard, like, concerns all around about safety. I agree, like, it doesn't make sense to have a facility so close to schools where our young children could be put at danger. And the proposal they gave us was to place an additional police officer for the first year. We don't have a police force here in Millbury. Response times aren't great, and having an additional officer for the first year is very short-sighted. Like, how, what's going to happen after the first year? How will we get funding? Like, we could ask for it, but it could also be rejected. And what's going to happen then? We're going to have more of our kids at risk for a longer term. Millbury, or, sorry, Mill Peters has a similar project, and there has been an OD death in their facility. There's also been reported increase in crime, and the management company there has changed over several times. So it, it shows there's a lack of long-term commitment to this program that's been seen in other facilities. So how do we ensure that if something happens in Millbury, that we'll have long-term commitment here, and people that will actually see this through? There's a number of job openings open in that Mill Peters facility as well that are related to, like, mental health that are still open. So even if we say that we would like to provide these services for the people in the facility in Millbury, there's no guarantee that we could actually fill that. And that, again, puts people that need help.
Thank you, Mr. Tam.
Thank you.
Marion Kong and John Young.
Marion Kong, again. You know, since I'm aware of this initiative, when the county want to put a La Quinta converting into a permanent supportive housing, and then I, my personal feeling is, I've been trying, you know, I gather a lot of volunteer, work together, you know how many meetings we have gone through? We talked to so many supervisors, so many times, but, you know, I only able to talk to one councilwoman, it's Ann Schneider. I request meeting with others, I don't have any, but I do have a text exchanging with others, okay? So I really want to know if the council is listening to their residents, even we are district electioner, but this matter is for entire Millbury. Stop that there. And then with all our volunteer work, many of them in the audience today, we talk to so many people, I got so frustrated, I got headache every day, and then so, but we managed to have our agenda item on September 12, move out of consent agenda into discussion agenda. Now I'm asking this council, pick up the ball, continue to push to discussion agenda for continuation, not for voting. We already changed the agenda from consent, okay? I think you guys can stop picking on the ball, and then I always had a feel, Millbury has not been so united together since my 36-year living in Millbury. Everybody united together. So please, listen to your district residents' voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. Please, people, please, I'm begging you. John Young, Steve Flaherty, Sal Marino, and Catherine Quigg.
Hello, I'm a Millbury resident. I live in Ridgewood Drive. I think this is the one chance for looking at safety for the city of Millbury. We all watch the news, we see all the vandalism, all the theft that are taking place in the city of San Francisco. We don't need that here. I fear that this project would bring in so many homelessness, that all you need is one or two incident, and that's going to break a problem that cannot be fixed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Young. No? No? Mr. Flaherty, please come, and then Sal Marino.
Good afternoon. My name's Steve Flaherty. I live on Ashton Avenue. The county wants to run roughshod over us, just as the airport and BART do. Once in a great while, BART and airport throw Millbury a bone. What bone is the county going to throw to us? They did not want transparency on this. If somebody in the county's office hadn't leaked the information out, the county would have bought the hotel, and then had the company come in to run the homeless, and then Millbury would have found out. Is the bone they're throwing us another policeman? Maybe sheriff for another year? I'm all in favor of this letter, as long as the right terminology is used. But my question is, if the county gets this letter, and they just wash their hands of it and said, oh, thank you, Millbury, we're going through this anyway, what are the consequences? What are our actions going to be? What possibly can we do to at least get the transparency we need, at least to get the city of Millbury involved in these negotiations, and to make sure if we have this situation come up, that it'll be run correctly, and there'll be long-term funding for it? And maybe it should be a different location also? Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Sal Marino, and then Catherine Quigg.
Sal Marino, Cedar Street. So I'm a newer resident of Millbury, a couple of years, you know? I'm for this project, and I, I believe you guys really need to send a letter that's accurate, right? We're sending a letter in bad faith already. We're putting the same information that's not really accurate of what's really been done. That, that meeting, there was information that was being given to us, but nobody was willing to listen, you know? Everybody kept asking the same question over and over again. What, what are you getting at? You know? And we're throwing money now, 600, 600K, right? It's 600K, 500K, 800K. What, what is it? Let's be accurate, right? They're, they're willing to give us stuff. Let's argue for real stuff. Let's work. You want to be on Mill Peters? You want to fail? Keep being with the hatred that you've got going on for other people. Otherwise, negotiate and make something successful for Millbury. You know, I want to be here. I was really disappointed in, in what this community has shown, like, so much unity with lack of empathy for our fellow human beings. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly, I've asked, and I will have you escorted out. I will have other people escorted out. We're going to have a controlled meeting today, and be respectful to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Marino, and welcome to Millbury. Catherine Quigg.
Good evening. Well, wait a minute, it's lunchtime. Good afternoon. I did not come prepared, because I really wanted to see what was going on. I heard today, though, I wasn't aware of, that the California Housing Authority is going to be running the project, or did I miss hear that? We do not know what's going to happen here. We don't know who's going to run the facility. I've seen lots of situations where, right now, we have a wonderful organization that is actually going to, thank you, Mr. Goodwin, Goodman, sorry, that is going to run then, and is going to have people there. That sounds wonderful. However, if this management group from the church, if they change creatures or staff, how is the next one going to be? And that brings to what we just heard in Mill Peters. How can we have the continuity of a good facility? The other thing that really concerned to me is that the monetary, of course, is, they're talking about one-year reimbursement. This should be reevaluated every year, and we should be reimbursed based on what happens with inflation, what happens with TOT, the restaurant that's in there is bringing in money? That's another thing. And then I have really been thinking about the fact that who came up with this $33 million?
Ms. Quigg, I'm so sorry, time up.
The $30 million, I think it needs to be reevaluated.
Thank you, Ms. Quigg. Sissy Reilix, no. And Susie Reilix is the last slip that I have. This is your last call, anybody else in the audience? And city clerk, if we can start getting people on Zoom ready. Ms. Reilix, please go ahead.
Hey, thank you for having me. Okay, so our Millbury support low-income house, we have more than 200 low-income houses in our Millbury. So this project, I'm 110% guarantee. The reason why? One, too close to our school. Behind is elementary school. Then two block is high school, all the public school. Then three block is another elementary school. Surrounding have lots of many, many other school attendants, like Kuma, they have hundreds, hundreds of students there. Then I have before, like, like kindergarten, like total like 10 school in a few meters walking distance. So children is our future. We want their surrounding good neighborhood, that's why we're in Millbury, right? So we worry about their safety, their, they don't have filter, they pick up things easily. So we want to, we want the, the school in a good area. We don't want to something affect this school. So this are two, number two. Our Millbury is actually the smallest city and the poorest city. We cannot last this profitable income hotel. We are Millbury depend on this, this income. We just lost one hotel next door. We cannot afford to last another one. So if, I feel this project is like pick up our Millbury. So think like, our Millbury is easy to pick. Nobody screaming, something like that. So if I have to be in Millbury, find something low-density, no school, and put those 100 or 150 homeless people there. And number three, this is way is overpriced. I'm a real estate broker. This is something my right, overpriced, and something wrong.
Ms. Reilix, your time's up. Thank you.
Okay, so I ask all of you, please, to say no to this project. Thank you very much.
Come on, come on. Okay, for the audience, because a lot of you, this is your first time at a government event, we're moving on to Zoom. I can't see Zoom, so the city clerk will be calling people, and we may have some microphone for the people on Zoom. If I can't hear you, I'm going to interrupt you to make sure that we can hear you. Mayor, the first speaker is Joe Chin. Go ahead, Mr. Chen.
Good morning, Mayor Schneider and city council members. My name is Joe Chen. I live in Millbury on Loyola Drive for more than 24 years. I strongly oppose the proposal to convert the La Quinta in in Millbury for a homeless shelter. It will cause Millbury to lose $600,000 annual hotel tax income. Our city need the income for many of our cities' needs. Also, the site is near many schools. In fact, there is a bus stop right in front of the hotel, and I saw students waiting for bus in that bus stop in the afternoon. We are deeply concerned the shelter will cause safety problem to our children and residents. And I urge you and the city to take necessary action to stop the proposal. And I see that today, there will be a communication to the county, and I support your actions, and hope that you continue taking necessary actions to stop this proposal. The residents of Millbury will remember your effort in protecting our children's safety and keep our city financially sound. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. City clerk. The next speaker is Samad Raji. Mr. Raji?
Yes.
There you go, you're good to go.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today, Mayor Schneider and members of the city council. I would like to say that I strongly support the proposal to create a permanent supportive housing site. In my work as a physician, I regularly care for individuals who are homeless, and I was disturbed by the messages that were being disseminated at the recent community meeting, which depicted homeless individuals as predators and a threat to the safety of Millbury. In my own work, I have seen how permanent supportive housing keeps people off the streets. It is an evidence-based solution to the homeless problem, and it also helps improve people's mental health and can improve their healthcare outcomes. For that reason, I strongly support the facility, and I would like to ask that the people of Millbury act with compassion towards our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness, and not continue to disseminate the harmful stereotypes that were on display at the community meeting. That being said, I understand that it is important for the county to work closely with the city to make sure that the facility is successful. If the city, if the facility itself is not implemented well, if it's not resourced appropriately, then it won't benefit the people who need it the most, which will be the residents. So for that reason, I certainly support sending a letter and negotiating with the county to make sure that everything is done, everything possible is done, to make sure that the facility is successful. I would ask, though, that the city council approach this letter and approach this negotiation in the spirit of trying to make the facility successful, and I'm concerned that the, what And I'm concerned that the, what we, what will actually happen is that we are trying to get the county to move the facility somewhere else or drop the idea entirely, and that I would not want to see happen. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Dr. Raji. City clerk.
Next speaker is Ken Chan.
Good afternoon, Milbury City Council members. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm the senior organizer at the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities under leaders to produce and preserve quality, affordable homes. I'd first like to extend our appreciation to staff for all their hard work in putting together today's discussion. On behalf of HLC, I'd like to express our support of San Mateo County's intent to assist your unhoused community members through the purchase and conversion of the 100-room La Quinta Inn Hotel to permanent supportive housing. The lack of quality, affordable homes continues to be one of the key causes of homelessness in your city, and this proposal can provide your most vulnerable residents with safety, security, and the wraparound services that they need to thrive. I'd also like to highlight that many of your fellow unhoused community members are gainfully employed, but because of the lack of quality, affordable homes, they cannot afford to live here. Most once had stable housing, graduated from the same schools as you and your children, and continue to support the community by working and shopping throughout this city. They've been here the entire time, and they are your neighbors, and they are members of your community. In addition, when leaders make and support better housing policies, our housing system as a whole operates that much better. And the survival of your community members aren't simply left to chance or luck. The systems that we have in place should help us plan and provide the critical things that people actually need to live, work, and thrive here. And the Project Home Key proposal does just that. So with that said, we urge all Milbury City Council members to be a part of the solution and to support the county of San Mateo's intent to purchase the La Quinta Inn, because at the end of the day, anyone who has grown up, works, or currently lives here deserves a safe and stable place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Next speaker is Bonnie Patton.
Ms. Patton?
You're allowed to speak, but you need to accept the unmute, please. Bonnie? Mayor, we'll come back.
Yeah, let's come back.
Okay. Next speaker is Nathan Chan.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, Nathan Chan. I'm a Milbury resident living on El Camino. I wanted to call back to some comments from the meeting in July. First, that the son of the La Quinta Inn owner mentioned that they were interested in selling their hotel. And second, a comment from Councilmember Cohalen speaking about, well, what happens if the hotel were to sell to a private developer? I think the fact, these two comments in tandem indicate to me that a key part of our case, the case that this letter is making in terms of lost revenue, it feels like there's a big question mark there to me. If the hotel owner is willing to sell today to the county, I feel like this source of revenue is not something that we can depend on over the long term, and the city should be planning for how to address this potential revenue shortfall regardless. In terms of how to address that, you know, I'm really excited about the specific plan that the city just passed, which plans for, which sketches out a vision for a grand boulevard along El Camino and upzoning around downtown. It feels to me like we should be able to develop a lot of developer interest in Milbury and should be more than able to replace any revenue lost by La Quinta being converted to an alternative use besides another hotel. The other thing I want to mention about the general plan is that all the categories of mixed use that we have planned for downtown and El Camino permit emergency shelters, supportive housing, or transitional housing. So in our general plan, we are explicitly permitting what the county is planning to use this site for. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
All right, next speaker is Alice. Alice, if you could please state your full name for the record.
Alice, Alice Kwong?
Alice, if you could please accept the mute.
Why don't we move on?
Next speaker is Guy Young.
Mr. Young?
Yes, hello? Can you hear me?
Ah, you're coming in well.
Thank you. The July 11 meeting, Mike Calagie told us he would meet with us as many times as needed. All the phrase was to make us comfortable with this purchase. Anyone think that he has honored that? Next point, has our city attorney, which I think she's present here, is she, has she given her opinion on this, or is she even able to, other than reading contracts and matters? But could she give, can she give an opinion on this? Being an attorney, I think that would be very helpful. Next point, I would like to know if there are any, any of the council members that may have conflicts of interest in voting for this project, be they ties to the county or future political aspirations with the county, where they may want to vote yes just to be in goodwill. Next point is Vivian Speaker, I think, did a good job of raising issues with the appraisal value. I've seen the appraisal, find it odd that, and I'm not an appraiser, but find it odd that the appraisal came in at exactly 30 million, not a range, not a this, not a that. How does that happen? As the previous speakers said, it's three different ways of calculating it, and it just doesn't come out at an exact number. Eminent domain, if a government entity takes over a property for the greater good, they pay the fair market value. The hotel purchaser, a company purchasing the hotel would be factoring in the obligations of the TOT taxes. However, our county is buying this hotel without it.
Mr. Young, I'm sorry, your time is up, but you can send your comments to council directly via the city clerk.
Next speaker is Man Global. If you could state your name for the full record, please. Man Global?
I'm sorry, this is Margaret Fang.
You're coming in.
Can you hear me?
You're coming in well.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. I'm a Milbury resident, and I'm only speaking on behalf of myself today. Milbury is a city of compassion. We are compassionate to those who are unhoused, and we are also compassionate to our neighbors who are extremely concerned of the La Quinta repurpose. The Home Key project needs to be done properly, which should not compromise Milbury's economic vibrancy nor public safety in a long one. Besides the loss in revenue, the county should assure Milbury that there will be minimum economic impact. With additional residents moving into our city, whether it's 100 individual residents or 100 families, there will be tremendously amount of economic impact to Milbury. The impact fee is justified because the city of Milbury needs to provide various services to the new residents, who will need service of the park, police, fire, et cetera. Milbury is running on a tight string, Milbury is running on a tight budget. It needs the impact fee to implement these services to our new residents. It does not matter whether the developer is a private or a public entity. Milbury would need to assess a appropriate amount of impact fee, which is no less than couple million dollars, given the project size. I urge you to include such message to the county so that Milbury and its residents will not be burdened down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk.
Karen Lobo, please accept the mute.
Hi, good afternoon. Karen Lobo, Clearfield Drive. I would like to thank the mayor and the council for this opportunity to comment. I appreciate the efforts that our mayor has made to date to inform the citizens of Milbury about the La Quinta project. The lack of transparency from the county has been very disappointing. You know, California is planning to spend 30 million to build 1,200 tiny homes in Southern California for the unhoused, which seems like a good deal in comparison to spending 33 for a hotel that can only house 100. To me, this project falls under the categories of waste and does not spend funds wisely. I'm not against helping the homeless, but I am against this project because the county has not made acceptable fiscal commitments to Milbury. And I think that the question was asked, what, you know, what can we do if they don't hear the citizens? And I think we need to unite. Milbury needs to unite and let the county council know that that will vote against them next time around. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lobo. And I believe there's two more, two more on Zoom?
Yes, we do. We're going back to Bonnie Patton. If you could please unmute and speak. Okay, Bonnie, remove her hand. So therefore, Alice, Alice, if you could state your full name for the record, please.
I may have had to get back to work.
Alice, okay. So mayor, we do not have any other hands raised online.
Calling last call for anybody else on Zoom, please raise your hand right now. I'm going to close public comment. Do we have any hands raised? No further.
We do actually have one just raised. Vivian?
This is the last one.
Okay, last one. The last speaker is Vivian. If you could please state your full name for the record. And Alice raised her hand again.
Ms. Vivian, please go ahead.
Please accept the mute, please.
Hi, this is Vivian Tam. Can you hear me?
You're coming in a little wonky, but let's try.
Okay, how's this?
Little bit better.
Okay. Hi, this is Vivian Tam, and I'm a resident of Milbury. And I just wanted to finalize some of the voices that we heard today. I just want to be very clear that we are empathetic to the homeless population, that we are, it's in our hearts to help them. But we need to be smart and strategic about how we want to make this work in order for this project to succeed. It does not mean that we compromise the safety of our residents, of our children. It does not mean that we compromise the long-term sustainability and good health of this community. I want to be clear that Milbury also has funding constraints. The Milbury schools here is the second lowest funded school district in the entire San Mateo County. While we want to help homeless, we also would like to be strategic about how to make sure that we use our money wisely, how to fund the police force if issues arise. And I urge the council members today to take a step back and ask for a strategic plan that we can take a look at so that we can understand how this works, work, long term? How goes this financially, financially in the long term? It doesn't make sense to be putting a homeless shelter in four square miles in a very small community where a lot of folks here can be harmed. You know, coming, I actually grew up in services down in pretty unhealthy environments, and I firsthand have been impacted by that mentally, and I don't want the folks here to be impacted in this way.
Ms. Lee, thank, Ms. Vivian, thank you. I didn't catch your last name, but we'll get, we'll catch it. Let the city clerk know. And do we have Alice Kwong?
Yes, we do have Alice Kwong. And Alice, if you could please state your full name for the record.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you all, the council using their valuable time to set up a special meeting today. And as a Milbury longtime residents, I know. First of all, all the Milbury city citizens have a very high emotional, and I believe like you can see the town hall meeting, all the email, and majority people, they are really love Milbury, and they also, it doesn't mean we don't like to help any others. Everyone have a personal value are equal. But Milbury or city have been done a great job in helping the lower-income, rural housing. And so we are trying to helping Milbury also, and number one. And Milbury, like we using 1.8 or 1.7 millions and able to get an AT unit for low income. Why the county is spend 73 millions? And also every year you spend 2.5 million for the supporting housing. That means something wrong. The second, you cannot like do something favor for some group people, and then another majority group people losing benefit for mathematics. It doesn't work out. Another hand, safety. We are not discriminate, but by all the study, by percentage, some of the unhoused people colony, they have mental disorder, job addiction, some behavior issue, or some other background occurring. So we cannot place those people in the heart of Milbury downtown and nearby the night schools. It's not okay. Please, as our election official, please try to protect Milbury best benefit and ask the county to delay and need to do more and more environmental study, financial law study, partnership, because we cannot base on someone lost and some people gain. No, we are equal also as everyone living in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kwong. Perfect timing. With that, if there are no other hands raised, there are no other slips?
There are no other hands raised, ma'am.
Closing public comment, bringing it back to city council. The issue, and, and thank you, everyone, on both sides of this. And I'm going to let council speak, and then hopefully we will get to a vote on that. Anyone want to go first? Okay, I am going to start with one thing then, just to kick it off. When I review this letter and when I heard all of you, and I just, so that you guys know, I'm a copious note taker. I may not always get your names, and I won't pronounce them correctly, but I do get your points. And I think on both sides of the issue, there are questions asked, and part of the purpose of the letter is to get the county to give us the one specific answer and not the multiple. I'm seeing Mr. Marino here on the question of TOT. We're coming through COVID on that. The amount of TOT collected from that hotel has been rising every month and is now on par for 545,000 this year, as we still recover from, from COVID. And for the public, our hotels are very dependent on SFO traffic and especially Pacific Rim traffic. So one of the things that's happening is as China reopens its airports, traffic comes back and forth, and our profit from TOT goes up, and our hotels go up on that. And that's complicated to put, and that's why I had wanted to have a different kind of meeting where the city could prevent absolutely verifiable facts. So I appreciate your comment on that, and I will tell you, I talk to the city manager almost daily as we harden down the facts. Financially, though, it keeps moving because we're getting better, and that means more TOT on that. So with that, I would just say, we've got your questions on that. We've heard you, council. Where do you want to go? Mr. Feng, Councilman Feng, Councilman Pappen?
Thank you. As you've all been heard, I mean, Milbury is indeed a city of passion. It's also, we're also a city of compassion. The city of Milbury and every other city here in San Mateo County must do our fair share to help achieve functional zero homelessness, because everyone deserves a roof over their head, a doorknob, and a warm shower. Now, and to that end, you know, the county must implement these solutions by listening and gaining the support of our community. And there are ways for a permanent supportive housing project such as this can be successful here in Milbury. And to ensure that it keeps Milbury fiscal neutral for the life of the project, it cannot come at the expense of losing viable businesses, it cannot come at the expense of losing local jobs, and the project had to be right-sized, and there must be transparency, accountability, and effective public oversight throughout the entire process. The unhoused are our residents. They're our people. They're our people, and it could happen to any one of us, and they are distributed throughout our county, and they need our help right now. And we must meet our residents, our people, where they are. Help them where they are and provide those wraparound services that they need where they are. One of the greatest challenges in helping the unhoused is convincing them to receive help, to accept help. And so asking them to move around from one city to another is just adding more challenges to an already challenging situation, and that's not likely to be a way to success. So by working with our community and taking account of all of those measures as discussed, I'm confident that we can find ways to help unhoused, those folks, in an effective manner. And at the end of the day, we need to focus on taking care of our people, and that means every single one of us. So with regard to the letter itself, I, I think it's a well-written letter. Thank you, city manager, for all the effort, and it conveys the necessary messages. There are a few minor modifications that I would suggest, and there are, in the second paragraph, I think it reads, it should read functional zero homelessness instead of net zero homelessness. I think net zero is more of an environmental term. And instead of, at the very last sentence, instead of saying, "The city council looks forward to a response from the board," I, I will say it should be modified to "our community looks forward to listen," or to, to, to a response from our board of supervisors." And so I would ask this letter be signed by all council members, as this letter is intended to provide our constituents with the leadership that they've been asking for throughout this entire process and the strength that they deserve. So this is the job that all five of us sitting here have signed up to do. So with these minor proposed changes, I'll be mad, I'll be, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve this letter when the council's ready. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fung. Councilwoman Pappen?
Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers as well.
Gina, you might want to go a little closer.
Okay. Okay. Uh, thank you to all the speakers as well. The purpose of today was to get the facts out there, and for those who assumed we did not include them in this letter, they are very, very wrong. Millbrae is clearly established a compassionate approach to dealing with or working with our unhoused, over 500,000 a year with life moves, and we have seen results. I think over 200 people have been helped here. We have also provided, in the projects that have been developed in Millbrae, affordable units. We continue to be committed to that purpose here. And again, that is our goal here, is the facts. I would ask, this council has a fact sheet. I think that needs to be clearly attached to this letter, because that is much clearer on many of the points here. Do not assume that this hotel is not viable. It clearly is viable. Do not assume what our losses are. The fact sheet clearly sets out those losses. The fiscal responsibility of this council is before you all. The transparency, accountability, and oversight has been very unclear. The board of supervisors has changed direction. They have said things in meetings that are this way, that way. This is not what we want, and we don't want them misquoting the facts. So I would ask our council to attach the fact sheet and also include, because it is a fact here, that this location is near many schools and childcare facilities, and as was pointed out, also a bus stop. These are considerations that must be considered by the board of supervisors. We need transparency and accountability. That is the most important thing that's out there. We don't need people saying this, that, you know, oh, you're not really losing that much. You're not, that's not true. We are. We have to be fiscally responsible. We have to ensure the public safety for our residents and any new residents that come in. We don't have a vote on this, but the board of supervisors needs to be clearly informed as to what the impacts are and the considerations of every resident here. You spoke very eloquently, and we have done so throughout this. We need to know the message gets to the board here. The impact, the fiscal impact, is extremely important to us. It's over, it's close to 800,000 now. The fact sheet will spell it out exactly. That includes the public service, the first responders, the streets and infrastructure that we are responsible for. We do not have big-box stores here. TOT is vitally important. If you're taking that away, we need long-term commitment from the board to ensure we are able to maintain our fiscal stability, our public safety, everything, every operation here, everything that makes Millbrae great, including the ongoing compassion that we have shown. To the one speaker that said, "We are not addressing or working with our unhoused or transient population," you are wrong. We are. We have been, and we will continue to do that. You're talking about bringing an additional population to our city here without, you know, listening or taking the facts into account here. That's what we are trying to do here. So this fact sheet needs to be included in the letter. We need to add on the fact, the proximity to schools. We have heard from other jurisdictions, the impact of facilities. That needs to be considered here. Our obligation is to maintain public safety, to maintain our infrastructure and our financial stability, in addition to working with the community and the impacts on the community here. We cannot let that be ignored. That's why it is so important that the facts get out there. No guessing. Some people are up here guessing, oh, and is there a conflict? I assure you, there is no conflict. I know what I was elected to do and will continue to do in representing my city and also many cities in the region here. This is not simply, we, we are doing more than our fair share, I assure you. And we have no control. We have no vote, but we do have the facts, and we want the board to be aware of that. That's why we're sending this letter. I agree with the modifications of Councilmember Fung here, but unless, we've got to throw the rhetoric aside. The facts matter. The board needs to take that into account. This is moving in a direction, but if we don't get long-term assurances in writing, if we are not made fiscally sustainable, then what the board is trying to do here, the lack of success is not going to happen here. So if you, they're going down this path, it has to be something where the impacts are not so extreme to a small city that the success is questionable. And the question about maintenance is a very real question. We don't know, we haven't seen the contract that they've gotten into for the operators here. We don't even know how many people will be working there to help that population. That's very important. And then in addition to that, they contract project managers. What will that entail? It is a very beautiful property. That needs to be maintained as well. And the loss of jobs, the loss of businesses, those are all facts that matter. So the board has to have that, I assure you. That is my purpose here, because if any decision is going to be made, it better be made on facts, not rhetoric that we've heard from the county or back and forth here. So who's going to be there? How many people are going to be there? What is the exact figure here that you're, and what is the population here? We have heard all kinds of measures here. We don't even know, is this going to be a dry facility or a wet facility? Because I can tell you, in other cities where there are wet facilities, and that means that people who have substance abuse problems can come in there and continue to abuse, it doesn't help those who are trying to be, you know, clean up. So multiple questions need to be answered here. I hope we get that. I hope this is the purpose, I know this is the purpose of what we are trying to do today. So I ask formally that we put the fact sheet in with the letter so that no one can question, and also that we add the impact, the proximity to schools, because that decision has to be made along with all the decisions here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So we have a motion. It sounded like it was a second with an addition. Did we get a second with an addition of a fact sheet and the changes? Would you both then, just so we're following the order here, motion, second, Ms. Pappen?
With the addition.
Okay, with the fact sheet.
So I made a motion with those three changes. The second paragraph should read functional zero homelessness. Instead of saying, "The city council looks forward to," it should read, "Our community looks forward to." And then I asked the letter to be signed by all council members, and Councilmember Pappen also asked for the fact sheet to be included, which I would be more than happy to make that amendment. So I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I will second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Kaylin?
Uh, there's Councilwoman, Councilwoman, my apologies. I'd like to address a few different items. I very much hear our communities fear for safety. I know so many of us have worked so hard to, you know, build a life where we can afford a home and, and raise our family and be in a community like Millbrae where we feel safe. But I think it's important to recognize that we are, we do have people in our community that are struggling financially, that are experiencing mental illness, that might be experiencing addiction, that are in recovery, and they're all active members of our community that we all live together really well together already, that they're not putting extra strains. And the folks most likely coming into this permanent supportive housing, not a shelter, which is very different, would be similar, so similar to so many folks in our community already. I live very close to La Quinta. My children went to Lomita. That is my community. I was active in that PTA. I'm still a little bit involved, even though my kids don't go there anymore. And I worked in social services for almost 20 years. I have a deep understanding of how these services work, how successful they are when they're done right, and how wonderful people there are that live there. And I would hope that person to person, neighbor to neighbor, that I could look you in the eye and ensure you that I would never do something that would bring danger to our community, to bring danger to each other. I would never do that. And so I really encourage us to, you know, understand that we have fears and maybe look more deeply of where we can find those answers, where we can find the, where we're breaking, where we have misguided fears and, and where those realities are. I do agree that from the county, we have not gotten fully straight information. We need more clear information. We need it written down in one place so that we know it's the accurate information and it's going to stay the same information. I think we need to work with the county. They need to come to us with an open door where we can find the yes to keep our city fiscally whole. I wholeheartedly believe that. We have a fiscal responsibility to ensure that we can not only maintain where we are as a city, but to make it even better, to get our storm drains up to date, our roads paved, you know, our, our public safety, our police and our fire, and I want to work with the county as strongly as we can. And I think we need action as a council together to the board of supervisors to push for more meaningful discussion, more meaningful engagement, and more accurate, permanent answers that aren't changing. I think this letter does some of that, but I, I'm not comfortable with all of the, the information and the sentiment in this letter. Also, the fact sheet, that's been barely seen by the full council and not reviewed and vetted. So I'd really like to discourage that fact sheet being attached to the letter, because there hasn't, hasn't been review or discussion of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments? Vice Mayor?
First, I'd like to say, thank you all for joining us today in the early AM to discuss this important matter. Compassion is an action word, and, and this has been an exercise in respectful dialogue, and for that, I thank you all, because there have definitely been several great points made in warrant of response, or at the very least, the attention of our city leadership and county leadership. We could, we could have benefited from this level of leadership, respect in decorum in June and subsequent meetings. It is my belief that while there is a need for communication to our board of supervisor counterparts, I feel that this letter at this time is nothing short of a carefully crafted letter to be utilized as propaganda to further manipulate and politicize our collective responsibility to welcome, care for, and support those in need. As a city, we have a continued, we have, have and continue to do so. We are a city of compassion, and we should not allow ourselves to devolve to a culture of exclusionary, mean-spirited, closed-mindedness that scapegoats our unhoused or formerly unhoused for our ever-changing community. Housing is a right. Affordable housing is a right, and every city must do its part, as no community should allow someone to live on the streets or die in our streets. Let us do as all leaders in every community must do, and that is to lead and not politicize a condition that is, that so many of us within our community have experienced or may experience. I urge my colleagues to do as I will continue to do, and that's to work with county leadership to address our concerns regarding the late engagement of our city leadership, the transparency or lack thereof, the loss of transit occupancy tax, and the development of a county-wide supportive housing commission or advisory group made up of impacted communities. I do support the project, and I believe that we all can do better at leading our collective community, both city and county, and not continue to drive a wedge between a compassionate and welcoming community using dog whistle political rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Just, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'd like to express my disappointment, because this letter was gone over by this council in its entirety to now represent that it is nothing, you know, that we are in any way inhumane or uncompassionate to our residents, we clearly misrepresent the actions of the city, the actions of this council. We have been working with the board of supervisors, and as the residents know, the rhetoric, if any, has been on their side. The idea here is to present the facts, and those facts are very important for us moving forward here, and I think everybody's participation has been a part of expressing that. And for my colleagues, the fact sheet was presented to this board here. To, to say, you know, that we really haven't seen it is not accurate. If they like more time to review it, that's fine, but in order to move forward here and allow the board of supervisors to make whatever decision they're going to make, we need to present the facts, and there's nothing wrong with that. I think that is how we ensure Millbrae moves forward and Millbrae is able to be sustainable and actually a great place to live here. So again, just wanted to be clear on that. This is not something out of the blue, and we, again, there are so many wonderful people here that work and help the community. I don't want that ignored. Again, if we can get the facts out there, then everybody can appropriately... Again, if we can get the facts out there, then everybody can appropriately evaluate this, and hopefully, we can get the assurances we need to be sustainable and to be a community as we are now, unified here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fung, Councilwoman Kaylin?
So, as, as to the fact sheets, the fact sheet should contain statistics, numbers that are published, and facts that are well-known and public information. And that's what a fact sheet's supposed to do. It should not contain any bias or opinion of any kind. And I'm confident that our city manager and his staff will be able to produce that, because in fact, that fact sheet will become obviously a public document, and we're all being held accountable to our actions, especially work that we do in public on your behalf. So I am confident that fact sheet will remain as such a fact sheet that contains nothing but the facts, statistical numbers, perhaps pieces of legislation that need to be included, well-known, public documented facts. It's what we are going to put in that fact sheet. So, and obviously, like I said again, we're all being held accountable to the work we produce. So I, I'm confident that that would be done appropriately.
Just on clarity on the fact sheet, yes, we all saw it, but there was not an opportunity to truly review and provide input on it. One piece of it is it, it has statements with bullet points of statistics under that statement supporting that statement. So I, I think that's not generally neutral in fact.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that last part?
Yeah, so there's some parts of the fact sheet that it has a statement and then bullet points supporting that statement. So that, that could show a bias or a direction one way or the other. So I think if we do the fact sheets, making it a more general fact sheet, and I don't have it in front of me, it was something we were able to see but not keep with us. So I think we would need further review of that fact sheet.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor, we do have a fact sheet that we can present to the city council if it's the desire of the city council. So we, so we are prepared to present it, and they, and they get obviously feedback from the city council if the desire of the council is to finalize it.
Okay. In terms of facts being biased, facts are supposed to be based on hard data. I, I have a little bit, my statistics teacher told me you could always modify and use statistics to get to any point. So hard data. For example, the $45,000 we received last month from TOT added to the previous months gets us to 545,000, and then you, or gets us into what's going to happen for the fiscal year or calendar year on that. Let's make sure we have hard data on it. Statistics or not, I like hard data, mainly because of my professor on that. We have a motion and we have a second. We have one more comment from the Vice Mayor, and then I'm going to comment.
You just had to comment.
Oh, another comment?
Did you already speak?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, yes, facts matter, but they should not allude to unfounded fear, uncertainty, or doubt. Putting a fact of its proximity to a school is no different than putting in the same fact on the other side, saying, hey, you can Google and do a Megan's Law search and see exactly where certain individuals are that have to register where they live within that same proximity. And I believe it's the intent behind certain facts being put into it that we have to be mindful of. Additionally, everything that I stated today was mentioned to this body, and it was met with racial undertones by certain individuals, as well as certain members of this council may not have been present when I made those statements. But everything that I said today was made very clear to this entire body of my intent to not support the letter, but welcome the opportunity for the letter to be presented and for me to be given the opportunity to address it the way I feel.
Absolutely. That's why this is a vote. So I think I've been pretty clear from the beginning. It's not necessarily who is housed here. It's economic impact from Millbrae. This is my eighth year on city council. I serve, like many of us, on regional boards, and in my case, I serve on the SFO Noise Roundtable. And I have seen, I, I've heard, and I tried to be collaborative my first five years. But the airport continues to expand and expand at our, at our impact, meaning more noise into the city, more air pollution into the city, more traffic on our roads, and now, under the most recent, their sea level rise plan, a plan to use Site 7 for the next 25 years for heavy construction material, running right past our brand-new affordable housing project. I have been, I just stepped down as Chair of City-County Association of Governments Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I can tell you where the bike pedestrian money has gone in my eight years. And only once has City of Millbrae gotten a grant for $254,000, when South San Francisco, for example, is over $20 million. There are great discrepancies in here. We are sending out a letter that we approved, I think I've got it right here, for everyone's signature, asking for the support of the housing groups, of the nonprofit groups, of all of our fellow elected officials, to help us get high-speed rail to work with us to build 488 housing units, 15% low-low affordable, that we entitled 15 years ago, and not one entity in San Mateo County, with the exception of SAMCDA, stepped forward with us. My concern is entirely fiscal. I have 40-plus years working in the environmental field. We had two people drown on December 23rd, 2021, and we have done no action to help our people survive flooding, fires.
Mayor, I need, I need to advise, I know, I understand, I understand your position, but I also just need to advise the council to stay on the agenda item.
I'm on the agenda. I'm explaining why finance is critical to Millbrae. We are under-resourced, and we have historically been under-resourced by San Mateo County, and in addition, made to carry regional benefits that they actually recognize in their documents, saying, Millbrae, you will suffer, but you need to do it for the regional good. For me, the way the county approached this was the last straw. So I firmly support the motion. I firmly support the inclusion of a fact sheet that is hard data. I, I would have said maybe wordsmithing, which is not something I like to do, and is the city council and our community. I, I would say also that the county needs to be held, they need to do their homework. So Mayor Mahin from San Jose just last week talked about a hotel conversion to apartments, and it's not working. And he said, it really isn't the City of San Jose's business to be running apartment complexes. And there are a host of reasons for that. I leave it to the county to find out why these projects, what, wherever these projects are, and not to say, tell us there are no issues, but to tell us what the issues are, because we're going to have to build our budget around that, on that. So with that, if there's no further discussion, I will call the vote.
Mayor, I have a question. Would you like us to bring up the fact sheet and spend a few minutes going over just to see, because this is the time and place in a public meeting to actually get the consensus of the council?
Sure.
I'll have a pass out copies at your dais. Okay, so number one fact, and this is a draft. Fact, no prior notification and no input from City of Millbrae. The Millbrae City Council city manager nor any staff were notified by San Mateo County of their purchase of the La Quinta Hotel. Fact, number two, the city council has no authority or vote on this issue. The decision rests solely with the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Third fact, La Quinta Hotel is a vibrant, highly productive hotel. La Quinta Hotel is not in any threat of closure due to the economy or hotel market in Millbrae. La Quinta Hotel is beautifully maintained, has a high occupancy rate, and continues to be in even greater demand coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. Next fact, the La Quinta Hotel is a, is popular with travelers. La Quinta, the La Quinta receives favorable reviews on TripAdvisor and 3.5 stars on Yelp. Next fact, the hotel market in Millbrae is strong and continues to gain strength. Hotel room demand, occupancy levels, and nightly room rates continue to grow and outpace the market. Fact, the county is incentivizing the sale of La Quinta. The $33 million the county offered to purchase the hotel is higher than the appraised value of $30 million. The county purchase price incentivizes the hotel owner to sell, as this is a $3 million windfall for the seller. Next fact, the county lacks transparency and has never made any written assurances as to who will be, who will be residing at this location. The next fact, the county of San Mateo does not pay property tax or hotel room taxes. The purchase of the La Quinta Hotel would result in an economic loss of the city annually of $540,000 in transit occupancy tax, $12,000 in property tax. That's $12,000 to the city in total. It's $75,000. So the school district also has an impact there, but not on the fact sheet. And then $172,000 in additional cost to the city to provide city services to new residents, for a total of $724,173 in lost revenue or cost to the city in Millbrae, just using those factors. Fact, the county chief executive officer has said, in quote, "People are one paycheck away from being homeless." The closure of the hotel could result, or would result in an estimate of 50 people losing their jobs and could very well end up homeless themselves. Fact, there are other less expensive options. Local brokers provided alternative properties to the county, showing the county could double the number of units from 99 to 200 for the same or less purchase price they are paying for the La Quinta. On the back of the page, fact, the county or state of California will not backfill loss of revenue to the city. The county said that they would give the city one year's worth of hotel room tax revenue and pay for a clinician and deputy sheriff for one and a half years. This is not sufficient for the city, as the lost revenue is not sustainable without a backfill by the county or state. Fact, the county will not renew the lease of the existing restaurant at the La Quinta Hotel. This will result in the closure of a viable independently-owned restaurant, displacing the restaurant, and loss of jobs for the restaurant workers. Fact, there is no guarantee by the county that the level of maintenance and upkeep will remain. The county states that they will maintain the property and address the issues down the road. There is no guarantee from the county, and the city needs an agreement from the county before they acquire the hotel. Fact, the city of Millbrae is producing very low income in affordable housing. The city of Millbrae provided $2.88 million in funding to the core companies for the result, for the recently opened Rollins Apartments consisting of 80 very low-income units with a veterans' preference. We also, with that question mark there, we, we also have other approved housing units, and I just need to get that number. It's, it's right around 100 additional affordable housing units. Fact, the city of Millbrae is committed to solving the homeless issue. The city contracted with Life Moves for two social workers at the BART station to assist with the needs of the unhoused. The city has expended more than half a million dollars, $500,000 annually, on the program, resulting in over 200 people obtaining shelter and service over the last two and a half years.
Thank you, city manager. So, this is the fact sheet that we would include. I would only add, for the public, and Councilwoman Papin, please correct me, the clinician that they're offering us is actually a county plan to provide a clinician to every city.
I've heard back and forth on that.
Okay, are they going, so to me?
Mayor, I get help on, yeah, we're, I don't think that there's, I don't think that that's clear. But they did offer it to the city of Millbrae.
Okay. Any further discussion by council? Okay, I couldn't tell, was that a, okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a quick question. So, for example, I don't want to go through each line by line, but the, the number of 50 employees losing jobs, where did we come, did we get that from the employer, saying, hey, we have 50 employees? Is that a combination of employees of the hotel and a combination of the restaurant? Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We can't get it from the hotel. They're not providing it to us. So we went back and we just looked and tried to get as much as we possibly could, in combination of, of the restaurant and hotel. So where did we get, get it from if we didn't get it from the, the actual? So it's, it's an estimate based on the number of rooms, employees per room, and, and for the property. But we don't, so we don't know that. We're guessing. It's an educated guess, guess never less. Yeah. And, and if the council desires, we could go back and ask the hotel, or we can see if, if, so it's confidential. So unless they provide it to. No, I'm just wondering, so when we say facts, they're not facts. Some are, some are educated guesses. It's an estimate. Yeah. Not a fact.
And it says, an estimated.
Yeah, I think we say estimated. I understand, but it's under fact. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, just a, a couple things. The very last one, Tom, when you read it, you added the time period at the end, and I think that would be good to add in. It's not written in, but, but you added the time period.
Oh, over the last two years.
Yeah, so I think that'd be great to add in. I think today, we do have the statistics or have the numbers showing exactly how much TOT is coming in. And so we see that the hotel is very vibrant today and continuing to grow. We don't know what their debt structure is. We don't know what their overall financial situation is. We don't know if they've recovered from COVID. So I think we need to be careful making an assumption of how vibrant and successful they're overall as a business because of the current TOT that's coming in. So I think, again, coming back to facts, we can say we see how vibrant it is now, but we don't know for a fact their overall financial situation as a business.
Councilwoman?
It says the, the La Quinta is a vibrant and highly productive hotel. The La Quinta Hotel is not in any threat of closure due to the economy or hotel market in Millbrae. We, we don't know that as a fact unless they've told them. We can see, based on the TOT we're receiving, that they are successful right now, but we don't know their entire bank situation. So I think we need to be careful in what assumptions we're making and putting out there. Again, if we're talking about how we're striving for credibility and striving to be factual, let's hold ourselves to the same accountability that we want the county to give to us when they give us the information.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And, and I will say, the facts from the professional staff, there was not a for-sale sign out in front of this hotel. There was never any intent for this hotel to be sold until they responded to and were incentivized by the county's RFP. So that's, that's what we're basing it on.
I think there was.
They never came to us. So, I mean, I think, I, I think to be clear, that the hotel owner responded to the county, saying, hey, would you like to sell? Well, how much? I think they started at 40 million. Then the county said, well, we'll, we'll give you 33, and it was an opportunity for themselves. So that's, I understand, up at the dais, but I also have to provide you our professional judgment. And I will obviously take the direction of the city council, if you'd like to take that out. But I think mixed blurring the lines between, and I agree with you, judgment and facts, but the fact is, this hotel was operating and it did not have a for-sale sign on it.
Councilwoman Papin?
I respect what my colleague has said here, and we should not be guessing in any way, shape, or form. I do believe the owners had said they were ready to retire. It wasn't something that, you know, they were looking at. The kids didn't want to, the kids, children didn't want to take over the family business. I believe that was represented to all of us. So it is, I think, the only fact that we can say is it's a vibrant hotel because we get the hotel tax. So I think that, that should be modified then. We, of course, don't know the financial structure of anything here, but what was represented is that the family's just getting out of the business, not that it was in any way fiscally unstable. So I think we can modify that in such a way, because we are trying the facts here. And again, but we do know, too, hotels in Millbrae are different than hotels everywhere else because of our proximity to the airport. So there is a lot more usage here. So to be fair to my colleague, I think we should modify that in such a way that, you know, based on the revenue stream here, a vibrant hotel, and you can put in the Trip Finder and all of that, but yes, that's.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. City manager, are there any?
I would just recommend, based on that, that we just simply remove fact, the third fact. Because I think we're, the fact sheet's a little repetitive there, so I think if we just remove that, that would meet the, the direction.
Problem with that, though, because when people come up and talk to me, including mayor of a nearby city, it's like, well, the hotel isn't profitable. The hotel is going bankrupt. That message is already out there, and that message itself is not true. So if we don't have something to counter that message that is being used widely, where are we?
Yeah, and I've heard that. Yeah, and I've heard that from a supervisor as well.
So, Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams, I have one suggestion. When we discuss fact sheets, it needs to provide hard data. One way to provide that hard data with regard to point number three, we do have their TOT payment to the City of Millbrae last month or last quarter, do we not?
Yes, we do.
And we also know their average room rate, simply based on public information, what's online, correct?
Correct.
And we can figure out what their occupancy rate is based on that number.
Correct.
And we can provide that data on the fact sheet, because that would have been a fact. Does anybody disagree with that?
That sounds good.
All right, so, to that end, I would love, City Manager, it's going to take your staff a little work, but please, find out, you know, those numbers and divide that by the average room rate on a daily basis, and we figure out what the occupancy rate is. And that number can be provided to the public. And those are facts, without opinions. Another thing is that, you know, we've, last time on the homelessness subcommittee discussion, Life Move has presented how many people they have helped and how many people are currently experiencing some degree of homelessness here in City of Millbrae. And I think that number need to be presented here as well, because it speaks to rightsizing in terms of our responsibility here. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we spent not half a million, but 550,000. So that number also need to be tightened up a little bit. So it just demonstrates our commitment as a city to resolving homelessness here in our city, the work that we've done, the folks that we have successfully helped, you know, the 200 folks who we have helped in the last couple of years. Those are the folks that, if we hadn't done it, they would have been on the street right now. And we need to keep that in mind as we proceed with our participation and discussions about where our commitment is to resolving homelessness in our city. And I think we, as the City of Millbrae, has done an excellent job, and we're highly committed to defunctional zero homelessness throughout the county. So to that end, I'd like to make those modifications on record.
I support that. We support that?
Second that.
Councilwoman Cahillen? Okay. Any further comments?
Mayor, can I just review it? So we are going to revise fact, the third fact, based on the actual analysis of room rates and TOT, and get what that is. Add in the number of people experiencing homelessness here in Millbrae. And then the fact of the estimated 50 people, we will try to get that actual number. And if we don't, then I suggest result in job loss and not quantify it.
It's appropriate.
I think that.
All right. So we have a motion, we had some amendments and a second, and the amendments were accepted by the mayor.
In fact, one more thing, Mr. City Manager, you certainly can reach out to the restaurant and also see if they'd be willing to provide the number of employees being affected as a result of that proposal. And just see if they would provide it. And if they do, that will be a statistics that we can provide.
Can I add to that, that it was my understanding that the restaurant had recently done major renovations and that that would be their loss for that? Okay, bringing it back, we have a motion and a second with amendments. We have one problem that I can see with this. It sounds like there is at least one no vote and one person who does not want to be, one council member, who doesn't want to be on the letter. If we vote with the current motion, it has all five signatories. How, City Attorney or City Manager, how can we handle this to respect all council members?
Madam Mayor, if I might interject, before we get there, I'm hoping that we can make sure that we have a clear motion, both for our clerk and for our staff who you're directing to, you know, make some changes here. I heard Councilmember Fung, at the beginning, when he made his motion, provide some text edits, and that motion was seconded. And then we, now we have this fact sheet also involved. Are we intending to make the fact sheet an exhibit to the letter?
Yes.
Okay, then if Councilmember Fung, maybe somebody could ask for a friendly amendment to really clarify that the fact sheet will be made an exhibit to the letter, because as the letter is drafted, there's no reference to any exhibits.
I'll make the friendly amendment to include a fact sheet as we discuss those modifications required to be included as part of this letter.
You're restating your motion, and I'll second that, I think. Is that whichever way, but how would you like it read, Mr. Counsel?
That works for me, as long as we're, we are in understanding that the Councilmember Fung's original text changes to the face of the letter are going to be incorporated. And then the fact sheet, as proposed, to be amended with the direction to staff to look at certain issues, has also, if staff is comfortable with their direction there. Tom, I don't know if you want to read into the record again what exactly your task is there, and then we'll confirm.
Yeah, I did. I'm comfortable.
I do think you have to add that there's an attachment to the letter.
Yeah, the letter will need to reflect the attachment. I think that's understood in your motion. Yes, Councilmember Fung?
Yeah, all you got to do is make sure there's an Exhibit A, and then just attach the exhibit to it. I have confidence that our staff have done this many times, and they can get it done well.
Okay.
Fine. And then as to your second question, Madam Mayor, if the full council isn't supportive, you can sign the letter as the mayor. You know, we're taking a vote here, and so your action this evening will be as a body, as a council. If you wanted individual council members to sign it, you could also do that, but it would be just the four of you who voted yes.
Well, here's what I would say. We will include five signature line. Those who wish to sign will sign.
Vice Mayor, are you okay with that?
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I think she was clear. I think legal counsel said, call for the vote. We don't know what that's going to be. And those that are yays, put your name on the letter, if that's a desire of the council. And those that are nays, then don't put the name on the, on the letter.
That sounds fair. Okay, so, do we all, council, have an understanding of what we're voting for?
Yes.
All right. City Clerk, could you call the question, please?
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahillen abstaining. Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
No.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The approval of the amended City Council communication, San Mateo County Board of Supervisors regarding the county purchase of La Quinta Inns and Suites for permanent supported housing, to include amended fact sheet as attachment, passed by a vote of 311, with Vice Mayor Goodman dissenting and Councilwoman Cahillen abstaining.
That is it, Mayor?
No, 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 no. Everybody has been fantastic. I'm going to, I'm going to close today's meeting. I'm going to thank City Council. I am going to thank the public, both no matter where you stood on this. This has been a hard issue for Millbrae, and I think we will look forward to hearing back from the county on that. And thank you all. Be safe this weekend. It is our Art and Wine Festival. I hope everybody goes out and has a lovely time. It's going to be cooler. And all of us take a big breath. Thank you. Adjourning at 1:47 PM.